Minimum of 25. We're good.
Good evening, everybody. We're gonna get started at seven o'clock. It appears that we have the minimum of 25 residents that would be able to vote in this town meeting. So... I'll tell you, we're here for two purposes. One is to vote on the RAM member from the Town of Vandova to fill the vacated position. And the other one is to vote on a series of ordinances that we have in front of us. I hope everyone had the opportunity to read those ordinances and we'll get started. So... We're gonna go through to... To hold a public hearing led by the Board of Selectmen pursuant by the Town Charter, Section 404 regarding the proposed ordinances, proposed amendments to the Town ordinances, the proposed repeal ordinances to be considered by the town meeting. Dennis? And to vote to replace and remember member of the RAM Board of Education. So, we're gonna get started. The first section is to choose a moderator for the special town meeting. Any nominations? Julia nominates Wally Barton, and it has been seconded. ELO, just so our secretary has that information. Are there any further nominations? Okay, Wally is the moderator for our town meeting. Wally? Voice move for Wally Barton to meet town meeting moderator.
Aye.
Opposed?
He's running, someone get her.
He's coming.
Okay, there we go. I'm sorry, we have a little bit of confusion as to what we were trying to accomplish. First, as a town meeting, we're gonna talk about the ordinances that are out in front of us. Those ordinances, the risks of the ordinances, tolerable, Eric?
Uh, I believe there are...
Okay, here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna do these one at a time, and we're gonna allow people to speak about these ordinances. The first one that we're gonna talk about is ballot one. Shall the town adopt the proposed ethics ordinance and repeal the current town ordinance number 5-41? Would anyone like to speak regarding the ethics ordinance as a jury?
Can someone? Jeffrey Ballard, 174 Lake Road. Can someone educate me as to be an informed voter as to what we're, you know, summation as to what we're voting on?
Sure. The ethics ordinance was proposed, sat there and broke down various issues that an elected official, a town employee would be in... In unethical behavior such as taking a bribe or something along that lines. And it outlined various ways to sit there and then form a committee, an ethics committee. And if someone was identified as having had an ethics violation, we bring it up to the Ethics Commission. The Ethics Commission would do an investigation and would come back with a determination whether that individual had violated the ethics standards. So, it outlines ethics standards for elected officials trying to be more appropriate within government, do a better job.
Thank you, that's my understanding also.
Yes, sir. Uh, the proposed ordinance was put up on the website. It's probably about eight pages long, the ethics ordinance. I just did.
Well, that is one fact from 2005 that members of... What is the proposed ordinance? Says to adopt those proposed ethics ordinance.
The proposed ordinance was to establish some ethics commission, which we don't have right now. So, we don't have any viable organization to sit there and look at any... Anyone who sits there and comes out and says that, you know, you're in violation of an ethics standard. All right, no problem. Anyone else? Julia.
Would you actually motion at this point to repeal the one that we do have on votes? Since in the public hearing notice, ethics ordinance repealing and replacing. Now, if we're not gonna replace tonight, are we repealing?
Well, that's what it says. Shall the town adopt the proposed ethics ordinance and repeal current town ordinance number 5-41? Any other questions? All right, so I'd like to call both on this. No? Call the... Somebody? Okay. So, we're gonna go through each one of these ordinances so everybody can answer their questions.
Thank you.
Okay, ballot number two. Shall the town adopt the proposed hearing procedure for citations ordinance? This is a policy and a procedure to allow us to issue citations within the town that we don't currently have the authority to do. So, this is establishing a hearing procedure for those citations. Any questions related to this?
What are the citations?
Uh, you can have any type of citation, a blight citation, a driveway violation, various...
So, for instance, there was a lot of scuffle about whether or not the state trooper should be issuing town tickets on town roads, right? Because right now, if he issues a ticket, the money goes to the state. We can't issue any town tickets unless we have an ordinance, unless we have a citation ordinance in place that allows them to go before a committee to...
Okay, I'm gonna go between my glasses and no glasses because I can't read with my glasses, but I can see all you with my glasses officially need by now. So, do we have any questions related to this citation issue? Yes?
Who issues these citations?
The citations would be issued by an official board that would be responsible for that. So, um, what was the warrant that we had? Wetlands could issue a fine, and you could sit there. Basically, what this commission does, is it allows you as a resident that if you are issued a fine, that you can go to the citation board and appeal it. So, it gives you ability, it gives the town the ability and the legal right to issue a fine, and it gives you as a resident the ability to go to the citation board to appeal it.
So, if I give the trooper to issue a parking ticket along the lake...
If the trooper to issue a parking ticket along the lake, you could go to the board and appeal it. Without the ordinance for the board, you can't issue, so...
So, I read these on the computer, but I'll give you a very brief on these. This is to appoint of an appointment of a hearing officer, how the violations are presented and given notice, admission of liability, a hearing procedure for the town and the resident. It goes into how you can appeal that and any other remedies related to any citations that could potentially be issued by the town. This is a... This is something that we needed to do because there is no ability for the town to provide appropriately for any fines in giving you as a resident an appropriate ability to appeal. That's what we're trying to get accomplished here. Julia?
Does it cover also, um, appeals due to fines regarding blight ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, so it's general, citations general, not just the traffic?
We needed to put this in place to allow all of these other ordinances to actually have the ability to do.
Just so we're clear, like, the hearing officer...
Once this goes, if this goes through, we have to then have a hearing officer. The hearing officer cannot be an elected official and cannot be on any other town board at all. They have to be completely neutral, okay?
Yes, sir.
Uh, George Kitchen, Arizona, Section 1.7. Signed written complaints on forms provided by the town may be submitted to the blight enforcement officers. The blight enforcement officer may enforce the provisions without having received a signed written complaint. Does that mean that whatever this is...
George, we're not on that one yet. We'll get to the blight ordinance in a little bit.
That's okay, that's next, George. Just hold that question for, okay? Five seconds. Yeah, no, we are on citation issue. Yes, Debbie?
Do you see how this is going to go? Does it call outside of all motor vehicle protection violations?
Yes, there are no traffic. We would have to come back to and pass the ordinance related to traffic.
Correct, so it's outside?
It's outside.
All state police violations related to motor vehicle violations?
Correct, because if the state trooper issues a violation, it goes to the state. We actually, the Board of Selectmen, this Board of Selectmen had discussions related to that issue about trying to do a local traffic authority because of the speeds that we're going around. And we were trying to determine whether, if we were going to... Ninety percent of the people who speed in town are residents of town. What we were trying to do is if you're gonna speed, you may as well pay a smaller fine to the town and hope that you improve your behavior. But the town attorney told us we didn't have any authority to do that because we didn't have this ordinance in place.
Okay, so I was wondering if the term of what is, because it would be the state trooper that we have different local violations that he's going to present to the person who's violating an ordinance?
So, I mean, to be honest with you, this is sort of baby steps, right? So, the first step is to try to get this ordinance in place. And then, at that point, we can try to find a hearing officer. Because, believe it or not, not a lot of people are dying to be in that job. And then, once we get someone in there and they're comfortable and it's working for other things, then we will look at doing something on a local basis. At which point, the trooper, yes, would have a different violation book and could do that, but we'd still have to pass all of that.
But if it was a determination at the point of stop, whether we issue some infraction?
If it's on a town... If it's on a town... If it's on a town road, at that point, then it can... Sure, but in general, we can't... The first step is to see if this whole thing works. We don't, even if this passes, we don't have traffic ordinances on the books. That would be a second stage. Right now, we just wanna see if this is gonna work because it has to be a volunteer. It can't be a paid position. And again, they can't be attached to anything else. So, this is just baby steps.
So, please don't take this as we're issuing traffic viol... This has nothing to do with traffic violations or anything else. This is, this has to do with P and C, wetlands, uh, if we consider to do the blight ordinance, those types of functions that we already have ordinances in place. This has nothing to do with you driving too fast on the road. If you get stopped going too fast on the road or going through a stop sign, it will be a state traffic issue. Robert? Robert Hamburger? Bob Hamburger, Shoddy Mill Road. So, up until now, as I understand it, any commission or similar body within the town that had regulatory authority is able to issue a citation if specific regulations are violated, like you said, like P and C, et cetera. No?
That's why we need this.
That's why we need this? Okay. This is, uh, this is town attorney, that's Robert.
Thank you very much, it's a great question. Okay, the general statutes have three different statutes that cover citations. Citations being ordinances, for the most part, that call for a fine if you disobeyed them. Okay, this particular one that we're putting forward tonight covers just about everything except zoning matters, land use matters, and traffic. Covers just about everything else. You can have ordinance, oh, neighborhood, we had in Mansville... I was town attorney in Mansville for many years, and we had neighborhood nuisance ordinance. We're calling for a fine. Under state statute, you can fine people up to $250 for a violation of the town ordinance. But it doesn't include zoning, doesn't include, um, traffic. If this works, we'll probably be coming back to you, or the board will be coming back to you. It's not my call, but they could be coming back to you with another couple of ordinances. One for zoning, planning and zoning, including wetlands, and one for traffic. This catches just about every, every possible violation you could have. If you wanna put an ordinance in place that calls for a fine, you're gonna, you have to use this and give somebody an opportunity to have hearing to test the fine. But if they don't pay the fine and they don't win the hearing, then the town has the ability to leave the property or, and to collect on it. It's like a court judgment. You go to, you have to go to court, pay eight bucks, and you get a judgment against the person if they don't pay the fine. It's a way for the town to enforce ordinances for public safety for all kinds of reasons. But it doesn't include someone planning a zoning or traffic violations. But that could be done, but would have to be done by a subsequent proposal that would have to come before the town meeting first.
Well, your question, your answer is a good one, but it actually raises another question. We've had an existing blight ordinance, which is on the agenda. I know because I helped draft and pass it from planning and zoning. So, are you saying that we really had no enforcement mechanism prior to something like this being put in place?
Yes, you did, because that's a special law. The blight statute provides for its enforcement. You have to have a hearing though, and up to now, you have no hearing officer. You could appoint a hearing officer under that particular ordinance by itself, but it's a lot easier to do it with a general... Because you're not gonna be able to find hearing officers all over the place. It's hard to find somebody to do it because it's difficult. But in Mansville, there were plenty of people volunteering to do it. But your question is a good one. The blight ordinance can be enforced anyway. There's also a statute that allows for blight ordinances to be enforced through means on property that's blighted. Okay, it's a little bit complicated, and I came here to try to clarify it along with the rest of the people up here. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions related to that specification, which is really just the establishment of, um, the... The procedures for citation ordinances, for citations to issue within our town? Any other questions related to that? Okay? We're gonna move on to ballot number three. Shall the town adopt the proposed blight ordinance and repeal town ordinance number 2-17? So, this relates to the old blight ordinance and an establishment of a new blight ordinance with some modifications. So, within this new blight ordinance, there is various issues for what classifies as blight or blighted?
Actually, uh, our current town administrator was involved in, along with you, and in developing this, I believe he was chairman of planning and zoning at the time, Eric Anderson. The original blight ordinance was limited to abandoned properties. What this does is it includes other properties, properties that are not necessarily abandoned in an effort to, um, control blight in the town. So, it adds on that item. And there's a few more definitions in there regarding, um, blight and what amounts to blight. Hopefully, if a situation arises where a property is blighted and the person living in the prop, living on the land, hopefully, all it takes is a, you know, a call, a phone call, or a notice from the town authorities, and the person will comply. The blight ordinance only comes into play in the situation, in the breakdown situations where compliance cannot be had. Of course, you know, the way the ordinance was first drafted, it applied to abandoned properties, so people that were not here in town. But this extends to other properties. And this was recommended, I believe, by, uh, Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Okay, so, I'm trying to make this so that you can understand a little bit. So, where Dennis sat there and said there are definition changes, uh, it does move from an abandoned property to all properties, and then it lists out additional blight or blighted issues related to debris and some other items that could have residents run afoul to this ordinance. And therefore, um, the, uh, this ordinance could be applied to that particular resident and that particular resident's property. Any other questions related to this?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Now that you've got it up, where I was...
That's all right, we'll go back to it. Fine.
Uh, on page three, uh, Section 1.7, the signed written complaints on forms provided by the town may be submitted to blight enforcement officer. Blight enforcement officer may enforce the provisions of this ordinance without having received a signed written complaint. That says to me that the blight enforcement officer, who might not happen to likely, can order me to do something or other on my property, whether I want to or not. I would, I would say that he would be able to issue me a complaint. But I would say whether he can enforce anything without a signed written complaint.
Well, if I remember correctly, the enforcement officer is the, uh, planning zoning...
Zoning enforcement officer.
Zoning enforcement officer. So, to be really honest, I believe that that person is an employee of the town and doing their job, going around the town, really is the eyes for everyone that's up here on this board. So, if they sat there and determined that there was an issue, I believe that in good conscience, what they would do is they would go up to you and ask you to correct said issue. If you chose not to correct said issue, then they would have the ability to sit there and move forward.
That's different from the way this is written, that it can enforce. You know, with letting the hearing require the property to do things like that.
So...
I really like the wording to that.
Yeah, so, just to be clear, though, you know, the person that would be coming out to your property and saying, hey, there's a problem here, you still have a mechanism, because they're a town employee, to come back to the town and say, hey, I'm not, I don't feel this is appropriate. This person is picking on me. And the town is gonna have to look at that for you, you know? They're not, they're not the last stop, you know?
Well, that's what we would logically understand. That's not the way it works. It just basically says that he can order you on the spot to take a certain action that he can enforce the provisions.
Well, I mean, let's be honest...
Without even issuing any kind of citation.
Well...
George, if you look at B under that section, it lays out exactly what he has to do. He has to first give you a written notice. It has to tell you what you violated and specify what the time interval you have to correct that violation. Um, and it gives a time range. It's gotta be a minimum of 15 days, and he can give you a maximum of 90 days initially. And he's gotta send it to you essentially certified mail, return receipt requested. Once you...
Well, that's fine, that's the way it should be.
Right, that's what he's required to do.
But I would strike that sentence, like, since he may enforce the provisions without even a written complaint.
Enforcement is B, though. The enforcement goes to Section B, which is out, which is that spelled out.
I would agree that he can give you the citation. I don't agree that he can just on the spot enforce it.
We understand your concern, but then there's also the issue of what we just discussed, that you could have the right to appeal any of this. So, you know, this is not, uh, we are not in a situation where that zoning enforcement officer is gonna come and say you absolutely have to... He's going to tell you, this is the rules, this is what we would like to see happen. If you choose not to do it, you have the appeal process that's available to you.
But again, even if he writes you, if he writes you a citation, he has to give you a minimum of 15 days according to Section B and a maximum of 90, depending upon what it is.
I understand that, and I understand the intent, and the intent is good.
Well, no, that's not the intent, that's the warning.
That's sentence, that sentence could be removed.
No, because enforcement brings you to Section B, which then explains what enforcement looks like.
It says, "Such notice shall..."
Enforcement simply says, he can then, to enforce it, he has to give you a citation with a timeframe and a remedy requested. That's enforcement, that's all that means.
You may not like the sentence, you may not like the sentence, but that's the legalese of the whole thing. But it is true that you have an ability to go through and you have next steps. So... Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions. Number A, number three. Um, exterior openings that are not boarded, locked, blocked, or otherwise protected. There's many farms that have a shed that's open on the back. So, they, you know, they aren't blocked or blocked. It's just the way a farm is for putting in a tractor or a compressor or...
I don't, I don't, I understand your question and where you're coming from, and I don't think the meaning or the intent of the blight ordinance is to go to a farm and complain that you have an opening that's not closed all the time. And we would hope that if you went and you, if a citation officer or zoning enforcement officer chose to do that, you would come to this board, or you would come to a future board, and they would sit there and you discuss it and sit there and say that's not appropriate.
I mean, there are a lot of freesided outbuildings in town, whether it's for hay or wood or I have tractors in some, so we're not talking about that. This is about residential property here, where somebody has the windows all knocked out or doors off, whatever, and believe it or not, what you have.
All right, number six. Blight includes diggery which is not visible from the public or right of way and does not otherwise constitute a public health safety hazard. Well, why is that on the blight list? It's number six.
It's not including...
It says not including.
It's a not including compost.
Yeah, piles or piles of grass, which are not visible from public right of way or do not otherwise constitute a public health or safety hazard. do not otherwise constitute a public health or safety hazard.
Not a hazard, but it looks like it's not including the compost, but it does include everything otherwise.
Anything, anything after not including is not included.
Again, that's not the way it reads.
It's a little ambiguous, for sure.
Cumulated debris, not visible, not otherwise...
Who cares? Well, if you, if you leave off the word not including, it does read that, yes, the way you're thinking of it, but if it reads premises containing accumulated debris, not including compost or piles of grass, install them all the way down that sentence. It's not including any of those items.
It can include a pile of old wad of wood, that's not a not including.
So, is it visible?
It can be a pile of old farm.
If it's not, if it's on a farm and it's not visible from the public right of way, it's not included.
Listen, we're not going around looking for this stuff. We're only trying to address, we have had some issues here in town that we were unable to clear up because people were trying to skirt the, you know, skirt, skirt the specifics up. Now, listen, I live a half a mile off the road, and sure as heck, nobody's driving my driveway, but if I'm doing something that, you know, I'm, I'm, I start a salvage yard in my backyard, that's not appropriate either, you know what I mean? So, there's a happy medium here, we're just trying to find the middle of the road. We all moved out to this town because it's rural and kinda wanna be left alone, wanna enjoy our property and within our gardens and stuff.
That's, that's true, but some of us can't be, we, we live in more residential areas and there are tremendous examples of what we're trying to do. I mean, Center Street is a perfect example of what we're trying to accomplish here. We're trying to put in something with teeth so we can sit there and make something better about this town. This has nothing to do with, all of the residents who have large pieces of property are in the corners and, and have farms, we're not, they're not, we're not gonna look. I mean, who's gonna come to your farm and go back fifty acres and find something? We can't. This is, this is only from the public right of way. Julie.
In support of what we're talking about, John Valenti adjudicated several years back a property on Hendy Road adjacent to the road where someone who went there for pay and bought this open piece of land and cement building on it, no house, and started to dump car parts, oil drums, all manner of odd things were accumulating on the property. And he told the owner apparently that he had to construct a fence. If you go down Hendy, you'll see the remnants of that new fence. He did put it up, but now there's a very attractive home going up in back of the fence and I presume that when the home is finished and landscaped, that fence will be able to come down because there are no more piles of garbage. The man who brought the piles of debris, oil tanks and car parts and stuff, sold it is my understanding, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, but that's the kind of thing you're talking about. And who would take someone who'd come into Andover, buy a piece of property right on the main of Hendy and feeder road, decomping it all over, and start putting garbage in? Tracked, not trash garbage like we think of when we go to landfill, but serious pieces of...
All right, thank you.
Well, to give an ultimate example, I happen to be aware of a fairly large piece of property, I'm not gonna get in too much trouble, so, where is it? Way out in that, way out in that, there's a pile of cans and bottles and household junk that some previous owners basically use it as a dump. Well, it's just sitting there, it isn't anywhere near any water source or anything, it's not bothering anyone. And while I don't think it should be there, it isn't any of my business, it isn't any of the town's business. It can't be seen at all, it's far from the public view, it's not a health hazard, but that would be covered the way this is written.
No, it wouldn't, it would not be covered.
Excuse me, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do a legal issue related to this.
There was a recent Supreme, State Supreme Court decision where the State Supreme Court decided that a zoning enforcement officer or any other enforcement officer cannot go on a person's property unless they're invited there by the owner. Okay? So that makes it very unlikely that the town is going to be able to enforce something when it's way off, far away from the road and can't be seen. It's because it's very, very difficult for the enforcement officers to gain access to the property, they have to have permission. That is something that came down about eight years ago, it's very different.
I assume the problem, if it's not there, I apologize.
All right, yes, sir.
Very first page of your ordinance, under A, the last one down, one, two, three, four, five. Number six, public health hazard. Who makes the decision if something's a public health hazard specifically?
Zoning enforcement officer.
Articulate how you do that for me.
The zoning enforcement officer would determine if it's a public health hazard and if they need to, they would bring into play the Eastern Health, High District, uh, Health, High, Eastern Health...
Highland.
Eastern Health District Officer to determine if any additional...
Do you have any of that in print so the residents here in Andover know what you're looking for?
Well, the zoning enforcement officer would sit there and do that and then if you had, if you had an issue and you wanted to appeal, you would appeal that issue and it would be determined.
No, that wasn't the answer to the question. Do you have in print for all the residents of Andover what a public health hazard is so the residents of this town know what a hazard is prior to it occurring?
So, the, the, the town in and of itself does not decide that. It's not decided by us in Andover. We're part of a re, we're part of a regional, we're part of a regional district.
Okay.
Okay? And that regional district works with the state and the state says, this is a public health hazard, this is, this is what we're concerned with. And the reason it's not in print and available everywhere, although you could reach out to Eastern Highlands and ask them something specific, is because those things change, you know?
How do you enforce something that you don't know what it is, sir?
I don't, and that's, that's where a professional comes in and that's why we're part of a regional district, so that that person who's educated and continuing to go to education through the state and staying up on this stuff, they make the determination, it's not willy nilly us because we don't know.
Tell that individual that you guys at this board decide what the problem is long before somebody comes and issues a citation, that you would decide whether it's...
No, we don't.
An issue or not.
No, we don't. The Eastern, Eastern Highland Health District would have the final sentence on that stuff.
So this is still a gray area of what you consider a health hazard?
I, I don't consider it a gray area because the town pays someone to make that determination. Our tax dollars go to pay Eastern Health District to sit there and make a determination.
Now, can you give me an example, actually? Um, do you remember in the state of Connecticut, we used to put MTV in our gasoline before we went to ethanol? Do you remember that?
Yeah.
Just a couple of years ago, when you went to the gas station and said MTV, we never had ethanol, was not considered a public health hazard, was perfectly acceptable, everybody in the state of Connecticut used it. They then realized that MTV was leaking out of the tanks and poisoning the water supply.
Yeah.
That became a public health hazard. The state determined that gasoline supplies could no longer have it and the state switched to ethanol. A perfect example of how things can change, you know? Something that was state policy for years then flipped and all of a sudden became a no-no.
So, this is a blight ordinance for residential homes? Now, all I ask you is on a residential home, how would one know what is considered a public hazard?
And again, that's, that's for a professional at the, at the Highland Health District to determine, it's not something that we have to say.
Okay, all right. So no one here on the board would be able to issue a citation for a health hazard?
No, we can't, that's written to the blight ordinance, we can't. Your issue is really to judgment, it's a judgment called me and my professional, not a member of the board.
I, I just, I'll put another example. Let's just say you have a neighbor that has a failed septic tank in a leaching field and you can smell it from your house, it's leaching odor into your property.
Yeah.
That's what Eastern Highland Health District deals with. They deal with septic tanks, septic systems, and they would take enforcement, that would be a public health hazard.
Thank you.
That would be something that they would deal with.
Primarily, that's what this refers to.
Correct.
You should maybe make it clear.
Thank you, Charlie. Thanks. Very good. All right, any other questions? Yes, I see some in the back.
With reference to the previous question about section eight, okay.
Catherine, can you come up here, give me the mic?
Here, I'll, I'll go back to you. You, you hold on one second.
Catherine Hutchinson, with reference to A six on the first page, premises containing accumulated debris, the discussion we just had with regard to not visible from the public right of way, I understand and I agree, it refers to the compost piles, etc., piles of grass and brush which are not visible. However, if you move on to the top of page two, on the debris, there is an extensive identification of what debris is. Some of the items in there were referred to in the discussion about the, on the previous page. The last phrase on the B, mentioning car parts and boats and parts of automobiles and appliances, closets, etc., can end with trash and garbage which are in the public view. Is it intention that in order for the ordinance to come into play under the definition of debris, that the item or items have to, are in the public view?
Yes. They have to be in the public view. Lyndon is gonna be our mic runner, so, all right, and if you could just announce your name.
Catherine Hutchinson, yeah, and again, so they, which are in the public view pertains to anything unbased on the definition of debris.
Yes, from the public right of way.
Well, this line is line which is, which are in the public view.
In the public view, yes, but I have to see them from the public right of way. We, we have to, the enforcement officer would have to see them from the public right of way, so corrode, you have to be able to see them. One second. You need to do the reminder, I'm sorry.
Leanne Hutchinson, sixty-three Buckle Hill Road. I'm concerned that this proposed ordinance is overreaching. A similar one was defeated fairly decisively several years ago, was put forth at the time by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think that blight is very subjective. Our planning and zoning regulations mentioned near the very beginning of them, matters about health and safety in the town and as mentioned numerous times here, we have some enforcement agents. So I think this town is small enough so that perhaps this kind of thing can be handled on a case by case or complaint basis with a fine structure built in so that the enforcement officer has more enforcement tool rather than make this a blanket ordinance affecting everyone because that is a fairly excessive width that was just written under the definition of debris, for example. So I don't think that this is particularly appropriate if, if one thing or something is posing a hazard of safety or a sightline issue, but other than that, I think, again, this is somewhat intrusive. Thank you.
Thank you.
B, on the second page, top of the page, I object to the word junk comprised of equipment, automobiles, boats, and recreational vehicles. Here we have young people with no machines, they switch parts, they have one for parts, they all share the parts. We have some people with three valuable antique trucks, another person, they just have three not valuable trucks in their yard. I have fifty acres, so I'm not so worried about myself, but a lot of people are doing their best, they're not really breaking the law. Somebody may have a rusty, unregistered truck that they need for plowing and they may have a rusty plow that sits there nine months of the year. And, you know, we're losing control if somebody out of, out of town is deciding whose scrap metal is, should be removed and another person's can stay there because nobody mentioned it.
Well, it's not someone from out of town, it's the zoning enforcement official who would be managing this. The issue really that you have to address, and I'm, I'm gonna go back to your question for one second. There is a blight ordinance in effect right now, this is just making certain changes to it, to improve it as far as the, the, the definitions of certain items. So it's really more from the standpoint of it's not just abandoned properties, it's all properties. So if you have a property and you have debris that's, that's visible from a public right of way, from the street, the zoning enforcement official can ask you to clean it up. I mean, this is not where we're gonna go in and do anything crazy. If I was a zoning enforcement officer, I would go up to you, I would ask you, can you sit there and, and move this back to an area where it's not visible? That's what they're gonna ask you to do. So all we're asking for is, is the community is to sit down, have that ability to be able to do that. Is it? Yes, sir.
On B, debris, the first line is so open-ended, anybody in charge of that sentence has the ability to adjust that any way they personally want. Material which is incapable of immediately performing the function. Who makes that decision? If a material on somebody's property in Andover is incapable of performing the function that they saved it for? You or the zoning officer?
Can you, I asked you, can you start the car?
I'm not talking about a car, it doesn't say car. You see how open-ended this is? Material which is incapable. So if somebody has some bluestone that they stacked up to save, if it has a crack in it, are you gonna say they can't save their bluestone? If they have some sand, they're putting on there for their driveway, are you gonna say...
You can, you can get all the way to all of the DQs.
No, absolutely.
This is a very broad situation.
No, it's not.
You do not like the wording, you do not have to vote for this, that's what this is.
No, but everybody in Andover is not here.
No, we have this group. This is what happens in the town of Andover.
Right, this is what happens. People don't know what you're doing in the dark when they're late at work.
No, that is absolutely not true.
There's a lot of people that work nights.
This town has done an incredible job of getting all the information out of every resident. If you choose not to go online and look at it, that is, that is your issue, not ours.
This is too open-ended, guys.
Okay.
But, and, and keep in mind, I know, listen, I...
Who am I, who am I listening to?
My name's Adrian, I'm in Andover.
Thank you.
We're all Board of Select, are you, do I just...
No, no, I have a mask on, you know, it's, look, I own fifty-six acres. I don't let someone come into my house and looking at my plow that I use, I have a plow that goes behind my tractor that I use to clean up, right? I use it a couple of times a year. If somebody comes out and says, hey, that's junk, and I think, they give me a thing for it, right? Let's say I park it down front, because right now, my driveway's, driveway's back, but let's say I park it down front and someone gives me grief about it, I have the right, just as you were, to appeal that decision and ask my peers to take a look at it, right? And, and say, hey, this isn't, this isn't fair, you know?
Not the peers, just the people here on the board?
No, no. So, you, you can go to planning zoning, you can go and, and argue this stuff, you, you have a chance to, to have this conversation.
I am at least talking about my property, I'm talking about the town of Andover, because I came for a much different issue to learn about trees.
Sure.
Your dead trees, and I haven't heard a word about, that's why I came. I haven't heard a word about blight for dead trees.
We're trying to take care of as many trees as we can right now. Are you talking... Are you talking about my private property?
I'm talking about dead trees that could cause what you deemed as a, hang on, you didn't hear. Yeah, it's a public, if you treat them, kill someone. Especially when you walk around the lake, when you're trying to enjoy the afternoon on Sunday, a tree crushes them.
I, I have to tell you, I was, I totally get it, I was actually at a friend's house. And, you know, I was at a friend's house on Sunday and we were just having barbecue. And literally a tree dropped in their backyard. It's one of those ashes.
Does it matter what land it was on?
Well, we are trying to, Eric, how many trees gone on trees this year?
A lot.
What means a lot, man? And I ask a question. If your ordinance for blight doesn't outline what health hazard is, that means you can make it up as you go?
So regarding, sir, regarding trees, if you look on page one, A five. That deals specifically with trees, and that was included because the town recognizes that we do have an enormous problem with dying trees that are potential hazards.
Yeah, but that's not under safety hazard, that's on its own separate law.
Right, but that falls under the blight ordinance, and that is something the town can potentially enforce.
Okay.
So does that address your question?
Part of it, go ahead.
Okay.
All right, any further questions on this?
Please, good one. Uh, definitely, now, most of the ordinances were included and, yes. And I, I noticed that there's no noise ordinance. Is that could be somewhere in here, because I don't see anything on the documents we got over.
No, we don't have a noise ordinance.
I know, I know, so that's not.
We would have to pass another.
I'm sorry.
It would be, we would have to pass another ordinance to address noise. And, and I'm going to be honest with you, I wouldn't be in favor of that. Because noises, noise ordinances are notoriously hard to enforce. You have to have somebody running around with a decibel meter, and have to be a certain distance from it. And then the person can argue that it wasn't calibrated soon enough, I mean, it's a nightmare. So, and again, we're a rural community, so we're, we're trying to address these things as gently as possible. But as needed, so.
Okay, all right, one last one, one last one. Bob Danberger, Jodyville Road. So just for a point of clarification, we've discussed at fair length that the blighted materials, piles of shrubbery and junk cars and things like that have to be visible from a public right of way. So if, for example, my neighbor who has a sloping property and his backyard can't be seen from the road. If he decides to pile it up with differentials and old transmissions, and it can't be seen from the road. But I can see it from my property, and it reduces my property value if I try to sell it, that's not covered by this ordinance. Is that correct? Sorry, ask that question again.
So that's not quite correct? Because the definition for debris says which are in public view. So an adjoining property could technically be public view.
Good.
But you would have to make a complaint and then ask the zoning enforcement officer to come on your property. So it's not strictly then from public right of way?
It would require a complaint, sir.
Yeah. If your neighbor wanted to sit there and make a complaint, they would have to make that complaint to the zoning enforcement officer. That doesn't mean the zoning enforcement officer has to read, has to deal with it. The zoning enforcement officer, he has, he has the ability to decide what he deals with and what he doesn't.
If I might add, ever since that decision I talked about from the Supreme Court, the state Supreme Court on not allowing zoning officials to go on property when they're not invited to go on. But a lot of times the zoning agents and zoning actions that are trying to clean up a property, junkyards and stuff like that. A lot of that is complaint oriented, because a lot of those things are driven by complaints. And the complaining party is often the neighbor. So if, if the, if the, if the blight can be seen from a neighboring property. Then, yeah, it is actionable under this ordinance. That's correct, Doc.
One last time, okay?
If you want to call it that, do you have anything on record where a property reduced its value? Where you lowered the tax that you charged the resident? Because you determined there was blight on the property, so its value went down? And the neighbor's value went down, and you actually had to lower what we charged those people for property tax? We had to reduce the property tax on those homes because someone in the midst of it was deemed blight? Do we have that on record anywhere, sir?
I cannot believe you have any of that on record. And if it was, listen, if it was on record, it would be in the assessment.
Where do we come off saying that blight will devalue a property and the neighbor's property? If we do not have on record a property and the neighboring property literally dropping value and the taxes went down? Where does this come up? I understand.
It's my speculation.
No, I understand.
That's not their language, that's mine.
Right, no, I understand that, but I'm getting to the bottom of this. If the property values are decreased because somebody has a pile of brush that you're unhappy with. So does that mean all the properties around there that were worth three hundred thousand are only worth two hundred and fifty? And the town was forced to drop the tax bill and charge those clients less money for their property? Because a particular neighbor had a blight issue? Is that what we're here to believe?
Is that what you're here to believe?
Yeah, that's what I'm reading. The blight will cause a drop in property value. Isn't that why we're all here?
Board of Assessment and Appeal would be the board that would decide if an assessment goes up or down, not this board.
What is the whole reason the blight ordinance is being brought forward?
Because we would like to put some teeth into the fact that we have properties within this town that are not well-maintained.
And what is, what is the problem with that, nuts and bolts, sir?
Nuts and bolts of it?
Yes.
Have you looked at Center Street? Have you looked at twelve Center Street?
Did you ban the building there, Tim?
No, no, I, I.
So you're not familiar with that?
Correct.
Okay, so if you were familiar with that, if you were familiar with that, you would understand what this board is trying to accomplish.
All right, so does that mean that the, the homes on Center Street are no longer saleable for what they should be?
I would, I would almost guarantee they're not getting what they could.
Okay, so are those people that are stuck with this problem of, of being given a tax reduction? Reduction in their taxes because this occurred?
Arguably, they could file. I'll let you.
The problem is, we can't, if, if, if we start going on that path, saying, okay, we're going to lower the properties. It's, the town, us as a town, we should protect other residents in their properties. If we have this person at twelve Center Street, that, I mean, that place was left with wide open, it was, it wasn't boarded up. Wide open doors, we had kids in there messing around, we had a fire in there one night. And we, the town had no teeth to improve that, and all these neighbors have to live there and go to bed at night. Wondering if their, their house is going to burn down.
If I can ask, who owns twelve Center Street?
That's not a public.
It's not a public issue.
It's not a public issue, but what the problem is, there was a trench in the back where the previous homeowner excavated for the well. That was wide open, it was wide open. So that is the type of stuff.
And there were the flyers.
For all the other residents, for all the other residents.
I just read this paragraph, and it just seems so.
To pass, you don't have to vote for it. Vote no, don't argue with this over it, if you don't want to vote for it, please vote no, I'm okay with it.
But if I was on Center Street, I would want to enjoy my property and not have to look at a blighted property.
That's it.
That's what we just want to have residents have their fair enjoyment of their property.
And if someone who, and someone who has a blighted property has the ability to appeal and fight the issues. Those are all the things that go on.
So wait for this side.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we've currently had a blight ordinance in place since two thousand and seventeen. And to my knowledge, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the ZEO actually enforced something against a total of four properties within the town. The only one to my knowledge that was remotely controversial is we did have a problem with a farm that had two barns that were really badly decayed and that were leaning. And that we'd had repeated complaints from the resident state troopers that kids were partying in there. Between the time we issued the citation for the blight and the time they were able to address it. One of those structures which the kids were partying in fell down on its own. Which is a pretty good indication that we probably waited too long to enforce something with that. We've gone after several other abandoned buildings that we were having problems with squatters. We all live here. None of us want to come down like a camera on our neighbors. These are things that get used selectively, but it is a tool in the arsenal, and, and that's all it is. It may not be something you agree with. We as a town have failed pretty much identical ordinance to this twice in the past. And then we passed a much watered-down version about five years ago. Now, when I was on the zoning commission, we looked at that and said, okay. There were a few things that were clear that we could enforce with it, that we thought it was in the public good to enforce. And they did so. You know, I mean, you are putting a certain amount of faith in public officials and public employees that they'll act responsibly in the town's best interest. That's correct, I mean, there's always some judgment. There's judgment in many things that we do as town officials. You know, again, you may be for this, you may be opposed to this, that's certainly your choice.
Okay, Catherine.
Catherine, you're in your spot, though. I just want to say thank you to the board of selectmen for bringing this back up. We have over a thousand homes in Andover, and it is the responsibility of this board and the citizens to protect home ownership. We maybe have, I don't know, say, two to three homes that are in trouble here that the zoning official can work with to help them get on the right side of this. But it is not fair that over a thousand people that, or a thousand homes in this town have to endure this. It's, so I commend you for bringing this up. And I do have faith in the zoning officer, this board, the Eastern Highland District, to use common sense and do the right thing. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna end discussion on this item, we're gonna move on to ballot number four. Shall the town adopt the proposed event in use of town property ordinance? I'm gonna let Jeff Murray speak to this issue.
So we've had a couple of issues, especially this year, most recently about a month ago. We had an individual, well, actually, take a step back, we have a, we have an event permit form that we have to fill out. If somebody wants to come and have a race in town, or a special event using the rail trail or, or town property. They have to fill out a form, it has to be approved by the rector commission, it has to be approved by the state trooper. Fire department, and, and the board of selectmen. Recently, we had an individual come to the town hall, he had an event on Saturday. He came in on Thursday, filled out the application when he knew that he had ninety days to do it. And he ran the event, and it was not signed off, the fire department did not know about it. The police, the trooper did not know about it, we did not know about it, and the rector commission did not know about it. This ordinance puts some teeth that we can keep a good watch on what's going on and coming through town. Number one, traffic, recently, two weeks ago, we had the Rhode Island, Massachusetts, Connecticut relays. They went on the rail trail all the way to Rhode Island. We had, the Harper Marathon Foundation came to us, it was all discussed, approved, we had cert at all the crossings. Because we can't have events in town and have people coming across the roads on a busy Saturday. And, and having accidents with people hitting pedestrians and stuff. We need to know what events are going through town, we don't, we don't have two events going at the same time. And we just want to keep a better handle on what's going on with that. And there's been a couple of issues where we had a couple of promoters promise they were gonna give some money to some organizations in town, and they didn't follow through with that promise. This puts some teeth into that, if they did not follow through, say they use the trails in the back of the school and they don't clean them up afterwards, or if there's any damage back there. This puts some teeth in, for, for the board of selectmen in the town to actually impose a fine and, and get some money back for some damages if they're done properly.
Any questions related to this item? Okay. We're gonna move on to ballot number five. Shall the town adopt the proposed resignation and replacement of any town official ordinance or repeal town ordinance number zero-one dash two-three? So this, this ordinance is already in place as a minor ordinance, we're just making it a major ordinance with this one. Any questions? So this deals with the resignation and replacement of town officials, so how does it go? I mean, basically, in the past, we've had some issues with resignation letters not going through the appropriate channel. The goal of this ordinance is to get all resignations to go through the chairperson of various committees and directly to the town clerk's office. And then from the town clerk's office to the board of selectmen, and so we can make decisions as to how to replace that elected official. So that's all this ordinance is really trying to do, is trying to codify exactly how we expect resignations to go through the channel. So we put this in the ordinance to go to the town clerk. Any questions? Okay. Move on to ballot number six. Shall the town amend town ordinance number zero-six dash zero-one, regional council with the blight officials? This ordinance is to sit there and change the wording so that in the past, you know, this was voted on in nineteen sixty-six. It said the ordinance requiring a representative of the regional council be the first electman is repealed and deleted and replaced with section two of the representatives who said the regional council shall be designated by the board of selectmen. So this is an opportunity for the board of selectmen to determine whether the town administrator or some other member of the board of selectmen should be on that regional council. Any questions related to that item? Stay. We're gonna move on to ballot item number, ballot number seven. Shall the town amend town ordinance number seven-four dash zero-two prohibiting excavation of town roads or right of ways? So this item, I'm gonna actually let Eric speak to this one.
Sure, so there was originally in nineteen seventy-four, an ordinance put in place that said any time you excavate in the town's right of way. In other words, on the town's property, you have to have permission from the town in writing. You have to post a bond and you have to pay a fee. Well, the old fee used to be five bucks. And if we're sending a professional out issuing a permit and going through the process. It costs the town a lot more than five bucks to process that. So what this does is it sets in place what the bond requirement is for that. And then secondarily, it sets the fee to be a hundred dollars for that action. And the third thing it does is it puts in place a fine if you don't do that. Because one of the problems we have is that when you do something in the town's right of way and you screw up a town road, it tends to cost you as the taxpayers a lot of money. Because we're the ones that go out, Public Works has to go out and fix it. So this does basically three things. It ups the fine for doing something in the town right of way without permission. It sets an initial fee of a hundred dollars for a permit to do something in the town right of way. And it puts a bond requirement in place for digging in the right of way. Of up to five thousand dollars. Anybody have any questions about that?
Okay, we're gonna move on to ballot number eight. Shall the town amend town ordinance number six-zero dash zero-three? Insulation of the driveways connected with highways maintained by the town of Andover. Eric.
Uh, John.
Eric, did I steal your stuff?
Yeah, you stole all my stuff.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so again, we're just simply increasing the fee for a violation of, uh, we had a previous fine of a hundred dollars for anybody that caught, got caught basically doing a driveway apron without first pulling a permit. Um, the reason this is critical is because probably our leading complaint, or one of our leading complaints for residents is drainage and water flowing down their driveway. Or conversely, the town having to deal with water flowing down your driveway into the town right-of-way. And that's usually alleviated by pulling a permit. And then the, uh, Public Works supervisor goes out and inspects it prior to paving, you know, and explains to the paver what the town standards are and how it should be done. So, this basically just ups the fine to the max. We're allowed to, to fine people, which is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, which is still a lot less than our cost to correct something if it caused the problem with the town roadway. Questions?
Okay, ballot number nine. Shall the town repeal town ordinance number fifty-six dash oh-two? Change of the fee for an appeal to the zoning board of appeals. Eric.
I don't have that one in front of me, but I think the old fee on the books was either two dollars or five dollars for a ZBA appeal, which, you know, might have been appropriate in nineteen fifty-six, but certainly isn't appropriate in twenty-twenty-two. So, that changes that fee amount.
Anyone have any questions related to that?
What's the view?
Uh...
Okay, so let me sit there and read this. So, change of the fee for an appeal to the zoning board of appeals voted by the town meeting, April fifth, nineteen fifty-six. And we're changing it to ordinance fixing terms and methods. No, that's not it. So, is there any details on that?
So, currently, so this is one of those things where in nineteen fifty-six, the town put an ordinance in place with a fee structure. And at some point later, they added another ordinance which enabled the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to set fees for zoning issues, ZBA issues, and wetlands issues. Um, but they never took this off the books. So, this one basically just, uh, changes that. So, it works back to the language that exists in a later ordinance. Does that make sense?
Okay, so now that the town attorney explained it to me, this is just a repeal of this section of our ordinance, number fifty-six oh-two. So, it's been replaced. We're just repealing language that should have been repealed when it got replaced previously. Okay, ballot item number ten. Shall the town repeal town ordinance number six-oh-two, um, sixty dash oh-two fixing terms and method choosing representatives on the Capital Region Planning Agency?
So, again, historically, the Planning and Zoning Commission of each town in the Capital Region selected one of its members that then sat on the Regional Capital Planning or Zoning Commission, essentially. But that hasn't been in place since like the eighties. So, this should have been, been repealed about forty years ago. There just frankly isn't that agency, so there's no reason to have that ordinance on the books anymore.
Is there an overall ordinance with those governments? What's your opinion?
Uh, not within an ordinance, but there is a Capital Regional Council of Governments that has a board of directors. And that board of directors, there's also a, uh, there's a planning agency within that, but they're basically all professional staff at this point that reports back to the overall board of governors of the Capital Regional Council of Governments, of which each town has a representative. In Andover's case, technically, I am. But one of the things we did looking through these ordinances is realize technically, per our ordinance is it had to be the first selectman, which is why we wanted to change that one also. If that makes sense.
Do we have a question on that one?
I'm curious as to why you're using the term Capital Regional Council of Governments. What, what, can we check our member on that? You know, we've worked, the citizens work into, well, they, planning issues in Council of Governments. It's a matter of, and...
So...
Reading this, you're using old language.
Right.
We're trying to repeal that ordinance.
All we're doing is repealing the old language pointing to an organization that no longer exists.
So, we have to match the old language to repeal the one that... Okay. Um, the chair will accept motions to adjourn the town meeting. Public area, all right, I'm sorry, public area. Public area, I, I...
You wanna give? I would, there, there are two representatives on, on ballot question eleven.
That's in the next question.
We're doing that separately.
Will someone make a motion?
I'll turn it over.
Okay, all right. All those in favor? All right, okay. So, we're gonna turn the rest of the meeting over to Wally Martin as the moderator.
This should be the quick part of the meeting. Is to elect a member of the regional board, or the committee. Stephanie Bankhoff resigned. We have two positions on that board. So, now there's one opening, Stephanie Rizan. Two people have come forward and put their names in that they show an interest. I would still ask that in both cases, they be nominated from the floor. And they are Brian Clayton and Eric Chashenko are the two that have said that they are interested in this position. After that, we will open the floor in case there are any other nominations. So, open the floor for nominations at this time.
I'm nominating Eric Chashenko.
Eric Chashenko has been nominated for second. All right, is there any other nomination?
Yes.
Who's second? Is there any other nominations? Does anyone want to nominate Brian Clayton? Is there a second? And person second, your name please. Thank you. Are there any other nominations for this position? Are there any other nominations for this position? Third and final time, are there any further nominations for this position? Hearing none, we will now move on to vote. When you came in...
Vote.
Excuse me?
Is it possible that if each other nominated for something, you could tell us? You know, what I wanna be on the word. I think nobody else has had a chance.
Okay. Any thirty questions? It takes me a minute to question. Okay. No problems, all right. Eric, you wanna start first?
Excuse me, George, you have a question, Eric?
I don't know whether to vote either, but you've got one that I would like, are they here?
Yeah, they're gonna speak.
Yeah, that's why I just asked. They're gonna, they're gonna talk real quick.
I'd like to hear a short statement of their education on the law, to me, for each one.
That's what we're asking for, yeah. That's what we ask for.
Eric, you wanna start or not?
Thank you, Eric. Thanks, Brian.
Can I just ask you hold about three minutes if you would? Three to five minutes. Hopefully less.
Thank you all for being here and waiting in. My name is Eric Chashenko.
Could you lower your mask while you speak?
Is that okay? Yeah. Um, my name is Eric Chashenko. Uh, I've lived in town for twenty-one years. Uh, my wife and I have a seventeen-year-old daughter who is currently a senior at Ram. Uh, I have been in the past on the Board of Finance where I was on for four budget cycles. Um, at that time, I was a liaison to the Ram Board of Education or portion of that time. So, I feel that I know the ropes a little bit about how that works. I sat in on the teachers, Ram Teachers Union, a contract negotiation at that time. Uh, I was also on the Capital Improvement Plan Committee for three years. I also volunteered at Andover Elementary School for two years. And I'll also mention that our daughter is currently the student representative to the Ram Board of Ed annually, so also last year. Um, I'm a retired engineer. My wife is a very recently retired teacher. Uh, we're both, uh, advocates of formal education. I guess academics are very important to us. And that's the philosophy that I would be adhering to as your representative along with Lori Blake in town. Is that good?
All right, Clayton.
I have a question. Excuse me, what do you, what do you, what, how do you stand on the, uh, the recent proposal to re-turf the athletic fields of Ram?
Uh, there are a number of considerations there. It's a longstanding problem. Even when I was the liaison with the Board of Ed at Ram, it was an issue. The longstanding problems with drainage, which I'm sure heard about, and damage to the field. Uh, the, I had a long conversation with Lori Blake, who was our other representative here from town, about it. She's been up on it for a number of years, or as long as she's been on the board. Um, she's an advocate of this. Um, I'm sure you've seen the pitch that went around, uh, describing all the great things that would, that the improvements that it would bring. At the same time, there are some, a, a few things that I'd like to point out. The most important for me is, uh, I'll start with turnout. These types of votes have attendance flying under your radar. And you can have a couple of small factions going against each other, a very small number of votes deciding whether it goes one way or another. And with a sizable three-and-a-half million dollar, uh, price tag for this particular ride, uh, I think it would be a shame if we didn't have a consensus of voters. So, uh, the first thing is that rather than having twenty percent of our voters come out and vote on this, we'd like to have a true consensus, which means people, uh, talk to their friends and their neighbors so that we get an, uh, an accurate opinion on, on whether we should go forward with this. And there's two other areas. One would be the financing of it, and the other would be the possibility of what I'm gonna call unintended consequences. Uh, as far as the unintended consequences, uh, you may have heard that there are some concerns out there about, uh, increased leg injuries um, due to the switch to turf. There are some questions about whether the, uh, whether the drainage issue will, will rise again in spite of what's, what's going on here. There are some environmental concerns. I'm not up on this item to know whether these concerns are enough to tip it one way or the other. Uh, I will point out that there are surrounding towns that have switched to turf. And if it were completely crazy, um, I don't think they would have done that. So, places like Tomlin, who Ram placed Tomlin from time to time, Southland, or Weatherfield, those folks have gone to, to turf. And so, uh, I think it's up to the individual perspective as to whether you vote yes or no. The other thing to talk, to talk about here is financing. Um, it's a bond. It's for ten years, which is not a particularly long time for a bond. Um, interest rates are currently low, which is good. Also, um, they have, I think, intelligently a timeliness such that, um, there's a bond that's being timed, and then it's with a new bond to replace it. So, in your personal life, uh, you may try to avoid having two car payments at the same time. And this would be the same concept. You pay off one bond prior to moving on to another. I admit that, um, I was a little surprised that the, uh, the cost is a lot of money. I think for, uh, for Andover, a portion of it would come in somewhere and they would go to half a million dollars over period of time. Um, and, uh, and so I think all those things need to be considered. Um, the, uh, the Board of Ed voted unanimously to go forward and suffering with this issue for about, you know, going on ten years with the drainage problems we're tracking soon. So, rather than make a statement as to, you know, please vote yes or please vote no, um, uh, I would leave it up to the perspective of each individual, how you look at athletics, how you look at the, the problems, uh, that could be solved here, and, uh, the potential risks associated with the program as well.
Thank you.
A lot less concern with athletic, with athletic, you know, than I am with academic rigor. My children graduated from Ram. And I was pretty annoyed, they could graduate, knowing considerably less than I knew when I graduated. Children today are not smarter than I was back then. They can learn a lot more than they do. By the time I got through ninth grade, I had had three full years of Latin, two full years of French, a full year of Alchro, a full year of Planktonology. I don't see that happening at all here. Now, I hate it, Latin, but I, today, I find it very useful.
Do you have a question for Eric?
Yeah. Uh, academic rigor. Um, would you work toward improved standards of education? And what are, what are your views on Common Core curriculum and critical race theory?
Um, I, I'm gonna take a little bit of issue with what you said. Um, our, uh, our daughter is now a senior at Ram. And I also graduated from Ram in nineteen seventy-two. So, she will be graduating from Ram fifty years after I do. And when I look at, um, what I knew at age seventeen when I was a senior in high school, and I look at what she knows as a senior in high school, um, uh, she's way ahead of me. I'm very pleased to say that. So, I'm not, um, arguing that, um, every student has had the experience that our child has had. However, uh, I do believe that the academics of Ram are strong. Um, our daughter had remarkably an interest in Latin as well and had, had that for grades seventy-nine, ten, and eleven. So, I, it may be a person-to-person type of, um, experience, but, um, I'm impressed academically with, uh, how we... but I'm impressed academically with how Ram is doing. And, and as I said again, that academics are personally for me what's most important. There were a couple other bits there, have I said them?
I, I think we run over on time. Brian, if you'd like to come up down, please.
Brian, maybe you can answer some safe questions so it's kind of even better.
I'll do what I can to remember. Hello? My name is Brian Clay. And I'm going to try to be quick because I know this meeting is, is running long. I've been in Andover for ten years with my family. I have three kids. One just graduated from Ram last year, one's in Ram, and one's in Andover Elementary. The main reason I put my name up to come and be a member of this board was that there are a number of things that I'm concerned about that I want to maintain. There was a question around academic curriculum. For those of you who don't know, Ram last year was ranked number twenty-two out of all high schools in the state of Connecticut. Part of why I want to be on the board is to either make sure it maintains or goes up. Because that has a huge impact on what happens for our kids after high school. The second thing was, as was asked, there are a number of initiatives going on throughout the country and in this state that I feel strongly about. Some of them are the CRT, some of them are Common Core. And I'll just stand up here and say, I'm against CRT as it stands and as it's being put out. I'm used to be against Core Curriculum, the, the, the Core Curriculum. I've seen it now through my daughter, through my son, and I'm not against it. Am I a supporter? No. But I'm not against it. Why is that important? Because that means, number one, I hope it shows that I'm able to change my mind and that I'm flexible and that I'm thinking in that. My background is that in five years. I've been an executive at multiple large insurance companies, travelers, and CNA. My experience is running twenty-five, thirty, forty-five, fifty million dollar projects in departments. So I'm used to seeing big numbers and understanding how to interrogate a budget to get the maximum value out of your body. And that's what I'd be doing if I was elected to the board. I believe there was a question around the field. I can't dispute any information that was presented previously. Those are the basic facts. But what I'll answer the question as is, from my perspective, number one, I'm a supporter of athletics in high school. And so if you're going to support athletics in high school, the kids need a safe place to play. I'm also not an expert in how to fix the current issue. It has been there for a significant period of time, and it continues. If you go there today, it's flooded. The JV games today for soccer had to be moved because that area was unplayable. So I am an opponent of fixing the issue. As it relates to what's the best way to fix it? The current board voted to, to go with the field. It is big, but it's not a lot of money over time if you spread it out. If I was on the board and the information was presented as it was to the board, I would have likely raised my hand and said yes as well. Not because I'm interested in them having this random field, but when you look at safety, when you look at overall costs, and you look at having, continuing to be able to continue to provide these types of things to our, to our kids, to the kids of Andover, it made the most sense. I'm hoping I kept it in time. I think I answered the questions. Any additional questions?
Okay. There are no property owners here tonight. We're all voters. So when all of you came through the door of our check day, we worked in a large packet to bring you to the beat. There's a sheet for each of the ordinances that was discussed tonight. And the final sheet in this packet is to elect a member of the Regional Assembly for Education. So if you'll take out your ballots and fill them in, we'll have the register guys come around and collect the ballots and we'll make a challenge. You can keep them all together. We'll tear them apart out there when we count them, all right? Make it a little bit easier. So I'll put the meeting in recess until we finish voting and come up with a challenge.
Has everyone voted?
How we doing, students?
Good, how are you?
Has everyone voted? Turn in your ballot.
Another night meeting.
Closeout?
I said another night meeting.
Everyone turn in your ballot.
One more down, all of you.
It's hard to watch. Ask my husband.
Given the, given what we have in common.
Capital for the country, the way of.
Actually, he's older than me. He's seven and eight years old. From his seven, I think, four years.
Yeah.
I, I forget about my names. It'll take a while.
Actually, I'm really happy for you. You know, like, you know, sometimes you're taking it, you know, and you're, and you're running.
You know, for the, you know, the world. Come up to you.
Well, it's, it's, it's up to last year. Last year, we put together night schedule. We're still making years. We're going to be.
You know, it's, 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 you know, you did it in the middle.
I'm sure it's going to show which is all.
I was placed on the main. Two of us.
This is, this is, this is.
You shouldn't tell who it was.
We have to get our bridge done. You know, you sort of...
These four, these four, though, is like, is on... I try that too, you know, so I just, I just point it. Yeah, but he just starts, he starts the name.
So, copper is a very special structure that has a top side that are kind of one... Doesn't have to have a lot of this, those coppers or black coppers. So, there's an act of... Or the gray, potentially have two varying surfaces in the top. Basically, just sitting there. It's normally called a copper, a metal copper. And then there's just a couple different, it's either round or most of them have a big, small squat. That's probably got the... Copper note is a tricky copper.
No, no. And everybody...
What everybody thinks means it's very soft. So, it would definitely be a good stand. And that's why...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If it, if it has some... So, this is all, this is about the guarantee that the range is gonna be good. Which is a real... Well, the engineers call it... We have to find... Or, what I'm trying to say is, we can't hear it. Yeah, working the kid. I just give it all night. Okay. Yeah, working for it. I could probably, I could like, control it with testings. Oh, you do, so do I. I could've got torn into this shirt.
It's so catchy, right?
Nah, it's not, nah. By the way, I thought, I thought, I thought, uh...
It's so catchy, right?
Remember, they might get it, it's all... They might get eyesight. We almost contacted the lady, I didn't do it, I was getting so stuck in it. I heard they all got... So, you've got some really smart guys that actually... But like I said, yeah. We were just doing, like, basically just doing some spins and stuff.
What's a good room, bro?
Charge them a lot.
Like, I don't want, like, I don't want these things.
No, no, no.
These machines, she doesn't ship for us, I don't want that.
First hour is free.
Most of it's due, they, it's pressure, they, they should... Well, I like it. I mean, I like it, I mean, I kind of got from the guy that was... He was with the bodies, actually. He was something with the station and then the...
How are we doing, Lane?
He was a sophomore, so he's gotta pick him up.
Hey, you ever hook up with Charlie?
I kind of, all this stuff I just put on YouTube.
I did look, I looked at, looked at...
Priority.
Yeah, that's what's hard, people.
You don't know who to make.
Yes, I like to go to... You guys, we have, we have guys that's...
Yes.
No problem.
Just going with the...
To get him in town.
I know.
Not sure where, but...
Yeah, I agree. Yes, as well. Yeah.
What else is going on?
Really?
Just wanted to get you something.
Real estate seller.
So, one of the guys, the guy that I got with...
Really? One of the people inside this country living isn't all tracked up to be?
One of them's tracked up.
I feel like a guy, he's... I feel like a lot of the testings...
Now, like, other parties...
He's got, he's got outfit, but it's not... It's pretty crazy, Stan. Okay, yeah, like, like, most of our stuff is just like... Most of, most of our rigs are like... You have probably, oh, it's just like, I would skip early or something.
Oh, yeah.
It's gonna be like markets and stuff. Well, see, it's funny, like, you know what the thing is? You do have time to have the delta fix, and you can get that...
Maybe that it's...
Right. You know, the whole thing, the whole reason the enabling legislation was put in place was because there is a known... There's opposite values and what?
It was within the rest of the office, you know, like, just people like, you know, to see how sick...
But they put a lot of ideas into using it at all. A lot already have turned into, so it's basically... I didn't feel, a lot of things. About one point, you know, paper, there are moral drugs. Just made an older car, some...
Oh, it's a very good idea. But as things get more complicated, you know, we have to change.
You know, what's appropriate, I mean, I'm a... I can't tell you, I'm not having that after a long time, you know.
The only thing about that is, they don't have, they don't have a lot of, um... The operation was so...
The other kind of thing, actually, is...
You know, it's got a lot of automation, that's the only thing. A lot of this stuff is all... I look, I look at what they have, I look at who they has on, uh... It's all, they all, they all have, you know, footprints. You can go on the data, but it's like the stuff that I've been trying to do.
Autism.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I think, that's what I mean, I, I'm trying to talk to, I just... Yeah, Joe, yeah, Joe tried, Joe tried to get him on too, you know, that's... I was trying to figure out the architecture and all that. Why you gotta buy the, uh... Why do you buy that special? It's been exciting, cause I really love to... This is my next thing, cause I really love to... You know, so like, you know, I just... Just wanted to... Just wanted to get a lot of, was it... Probably also, like, even all of that.
Well, yeah, they have money. Yeah. One day, one day, one day, one day, I gotta play a hand. I play. No, I play like this. I, I didn't... Perhaps you saw, I saw laughter before he's been... One, one of the coaches, one of the coaches from the average team, was like, I'm serious. Know what? Maybe, right?
I like it. My what? My what? It's not, it's giving me the whole thing.
That's like, you know, so, so... I don't know.
But I miss it.
You're very good, so... I am, I am blackish, so I can play.
That's okay, I, I don't like it. Yeah, I know. Tell them all the time, it's down.
Ah, sure, okay.
I think, I think... Who's it? I don't get it, I like it, I like it. I get the door, I get the notification, something's going down, I don't know, what is it? Why didn't you get that? So, I don't know, you've got this around, man.
We lost there. So, you are the man that takes care of everything.
That's it, we never get it, it's tough. You don't want it, you don't want it. We had this water pool in my basement, for a while.
I, I, I... And you have so many things in mind, uh, say, especially, it's a...
You can... Come with it. It'll be on the website, they'll go, they'll let you...
Oh, I won't do it.
He's, he's just putting me through the rest.
Yeah, I won't do it.
I call the meeting back to order, it should only take a minute. What I'm gonna do is go by ballot and give you the breakdown of yes, no, and the blanks. Ballot number one, nothing's ordered. Forty-two yes, two no, one blank. Ballot number two, proposed hearing procedure, thirty-six yes, seven no, two blank. Number three, proposed blind ordinance, thirty yes, fifteen no, one blank. Number four, shall the town adopt proposed event of use of town property ordinance, forty-three yes, two no, one blank. Number five, shall the town adopt proposed resignation replacement, any town official ordinance, repeal town ordinance, oh-one dash twenty, forty-three yes, three no. Ballot number six, shall the town amend town ordinance, regional council of elected officials, forty yes, three no, three blank. Number seven, shall the town amend ordinance prohibiting excavation of town roads and right of ways, forty-three yes, two no, one blank. Number eight, shall the town amend town ordinance installation of driveways, thirty-seven yes, seven no, two blank. Number nine, shall the town appeal town ordinance change of fee for appeal, forty yes, one no, two blank. And shall the town repeal town ordinance sixty zero zero two fixing term limits, fixing terms and defensifying representatives, forty yes, one no, two blank. Election of the Ram Board of Education, Brian Quaid seventeen, Eric Chafinko twenty-five, four blank. A motion to adjourn this meeting is now ordered. Motion to adjourn, all in favor? Leading is hereby adjourned, thank you for attending.